I ask that the chamber comes to order, please. I now call to order the organizational meeting of the Huntsville City Council. My first course faction is declare all offices vacant and turn the meeting over to Chuck Haygood. Mr. Haygood.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. At this time, the floor is open for nominations for the president of the city council for the upcoming year.
Mr. President, uh, Mr. Presiding, I move that Mark Russell would serve as our president.
Are there any further nominations?
I nominate Will Culver.
Are there any further nominations? Hearing no further nominations, I need a motion to close it.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, they will be voted in, say in order that they were nominated. Mark, all those in favor of Mark Russell, who you wrote aye?
Aye.
Epstein?
Are we gonna have to roll call vote? Mr. Culver?
Nay.
Ms. Robinson?
Aye.
Epstein?
Ms. Kling?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Russell is elected president of the city council and I'll turn the meeting over to him.
Thank you, Mr. Haygood. Thank you, council members, for your support. I now open nomination for President Pro Tem. The chair nominates Dr. Richard Showers.
I nominate Bill Kling.
Are there further nominations? I need a motion to close on the nominations. Chair moves it. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of closing nominations, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The nominations have been closed. We'll vote in order of the nominations. All those in favor of Dr. Showers will go by roll call vote. Please signify by saying aye. Mr. Culver?
Nay.
Ms. Robinson?
Nay.
Mr. Kling?
Epstein.
Dr. Showers?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We do not have a majority. Now we'll vote on Mr. Kling. Mr. Culver?
Aye.
Dr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Kling?
Aye.
Dr. Showers?
No.
Chair votes no. Mr. Kling, congratulations. You're the second presiding officer. President Pro Tem. I now open nominations for the third presiding officer.
I nominate Will Culver.
Are there other nominations? The chair moves the nominations to be closed. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Kling. All those in favor of closing nominations signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The nominations have been closed. Mr. Culver, congratulations. You're the third presiding officer. The organizational meeting is now closed. We will now open a special called meeting to consider unfinished business items for action. First is ordinance number fourteen dash eight five three declaring certain property located at four four nine Sondra Lane Drive as surplus. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. Showers. Mr. Hamilton, could you explain this, please?
Members of council, this is the first of two items that are related to the same action, and that is the proposed sale of this property should you choose to declare it surplus. It's commonly known as University Park. The proposal is to declare the property surplus, and then the second item that you would consider if you do that is propose sale of the property to University Alabama Huntsville. It is their intent to retain the park as a recreational and athletic space. It is, it's located on the kind of the eastern end of the campus adjacent to their existing athletic complexes, and it's their intent to use it for intramural sports as well as recreation. They've also committed to keep it open to the public, and we've received a letter from the university president outlining their intent and the specific steps they would take to ensure that it continues to be used for that purpose.
Thank you. Council members, we may have people from the public that wish to speak to us on this. Should I open the floor for public comment, or are you okay with that? Is there anyone from the public that wishes to address council on this particular issue? Sir, if you'll go to the microphone, just state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name's Larry Thomas. I live at nine oh eight Henderson. I actually own four properties in the neighborhood. I've owned three rental houses over in the Greenacre subdivision, and I own one house over in the McThornmore Eckers subdivision. And I know one thing that is incorrect. I know you say that it's commonly known as University Park. It's actually commonly known in our neighborhood and has for fifty-something years as Riggsfield. It has, it may be on the eastern end of the university, but it is located right there, also adjoining properties to our neighborhoods. And this park really belongs more to our neighborhoods than it has to the city and more to, than to UAH. UAH wants to take this property and of course develop this as a property so that they can develop adult baseball fields. I'm not against this portion of this. What I would like to ensure is that there is some form of deed restrictions placed on this property to ensure that this park continues to be able to be used by the public, not just a letter, because a hundred years from now, people are gonna forget the letter. We want this park to be able to guarantee to be able to be used for recreational use only. I have been told that UAH really cares, that all council votes yes on this. I've also been told that they cannot accept deed restrictions placed on the property. However, in the light of both of those two things, I also know that AL dot com misreported that this property appraised for four hundred and ten thousand. It actually appraised for one point two million dollars, and the sale of this property is gonna be bringing in nine hundred thousand from UAH. It does benefit UAH. It does benefit the neighborhoods for this deal to happen, but only if it happens with deed restrictions. In lieu of that, what I would propose to council is to still allow the mayor to carry out the sale, however require that there are deed restrictions be in place, and a portion of the funds from this sale to go back into this same park to boost the structure of the park for the neighborhood as well as for UAH. What I'm suggesting is, you know, since they are allowing the public to have access to this park, is to cut the one point two million in half to basically six hundred thousand for the sale. And the three hundred thousand that is in the gap there from what the nine hundred thousand what they offered, is to take that three hundred thousand and either put it in the trust of the Rocket View Neighborhood Association, the community surrounding that park, to be able to be spent to help build the structures that are for that park, or to have some form of trust that the UAH can use again to develop this park for our neighborhood, for UAH residents. I think the six hundred thousand that y'all are getting to develop Brom Springs after that fact is sufficient to do the things that y'all want to do to Brom Springs for the, bringing in the Continental League. I have been told that, you know, the push was on from UAH for their meeting, but no, that UAH told us that it wasn't UAH that was pushing the timeline on this, that it was actually council, because in order to get the Continental League moved into Brom Springs, they have to start construction right away. So that, the hurry timeline on this is on council. I appreciate your time. I appreciate your effort. I do hope that with deed restrictions and a lowered price, or a semi-lowed price, will help UAH to accept the deed restrictions that are, I'm proposing for this property. And I don't know if anyone else has any comments, but I would like to open up the floor to any other public members.
Mr. Thomas, that's my role to open up the floor? And we will keep the floor open.
President?
Mr. Kling, go ahead.
I was just pointing out, that's what we did ask Mr. Russell. Perhaps somebody from UAH can comment after we've had all this citizens' comments, as long as we got the floor open.
Sure. Why don't we hear from the rest of the citizens, so we can... Ms. Reed, would you like to comment?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, please. Come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Thank you. One thousand eight Bob Wallace Avenue. Thank you for every comment that you made. You're my kind of people to get involved in city government. Anyway, I'm back on the issues. This is a fast one. Did they have the meeting for UAH and the citizens? Did that meeting ever happen?
Last Thursday night.
It did. Thank you for calling me. I didn't know about it, but anyway.
It was...
I still live within the two or three blocks of that. It's okay. But, did I understand him to say you're gonna get how much out of this property? The next line, it says you're gonna sell it. So I'll talk with both lines tonight. Tell us the price that UAH is offering you all.
Nine hundred thousand dollars.
Is that the price? Okay. And you're gonna take that money to Brom Springs and tear down Scruggs and Aquatic Center, is my understanding. We have a lot of rumors floating through town, and we'd like to set some of this stuff straight. Anyway, are you gonna, I understand they're gonna give the park, UAH is just gonna let y'all, the neighborhood use the park for ninety-nine years, maybe?
Ms. Reed, if you'll address your questions to the chair.
Well, I did. I'm asking y'all.
Okay.
That'd be a good point. Put in quite a few years on them, and then they can't do what else they want to with it. Do you have a timeframe that this park can stay there for the neighborhood?
The proposal is to sell the park.
So y'all are gonna sell the park?
That's, that's what the proposed action is tonight?
Tonight, I know. But it said, y'all saying that they can use the park up until how long? What's the timeframe on it?
Ms. Reed, it'll be as long as they keep it as a park, as long as the university decides to keep it as a park.
Oh, okay. So you all are not putting any, you're not attaching any time to this. They can do what they want to, when they want to.
Right.
That's my point.
And they're, they're actually the owners of it. I mean, they will be the owners of it, and they will be able to use it for the future. You know, there's a lot of interest when you do this. You know, the whole idea behind it, there was a meeting Thursday night, what, sixty people? About thirty...
Probably seventy-five.
Seventy-five people were there. And they started answering questions on it, and they went through it, and from all reports, I've heard that Mr. Hamilton did a great job. I think Mr. Culver was there, and Mr. Kling was there. And they worked through the specifics of it, the four or five issues that came out. We addressed with UAH, and the president of UAH sent us a letter today saying that they were willing to do those four or five items, plus several more. You know, we, we did not offer this property for sale to them with deed restrictions on it. And, and the deed restrictions are something that deed restrictions go forever. We're seeing problems with deed restrictions right now down on John Hunt Park, 'cause there's certain parts of it that don't fit into what, what we're doing, so we're having to go through and look at getting attorney general's opinions and things like that for even public-private partnerships. So sometimes those deed restrictions sound good, and they, they don't turn out to be as good as they can. You've gotta leave yourself some flexibility. Fifty years from now, what's gonna be happening to that property? Twenty-five years from now, what's gonna be happening to that property? What is the neighborhood gonna look like? What's the university gonna look like? And those are the kind of questions that, you know, we've been looking at. The University of Alabama Huntsville is a very reputable group, a very reputable education facility, and they are good partners with the city of Huntsville. So we're trying to make sure that we work through this as a partnership. The nine hundred thousand dollars that comes out of this park will go into Brom Springs Park, and it'll make it where now Continental League will have football fields and soccer fields, and they'll be able to do all their activities down at Brom Springs Park. That is money that will be going towards improvement of Brom Springs Park. But it's, it all just makes sense as we move through. The Continental League recreational group has looked at it and approved it. We've worked with the neighborhood. There's still some question marks in there with the neighborhood. The question mark, I think, falls down to, you know, long-term deed restrictions or not. And is that kind of, kind of where we are with it? And, you know, whose hands do you wanna leave it into? You know, is it the University of Alabama Huntsville or the city of Huntsville? You know, and both, both sides, I think, would treat, treat the property, property honorably. We all have a commitment to making sure that the neighborhood can use that as a park, that it is, is a park that stays there for the neighborhood, but also expanding it so that students at UAH can use it for intramural play, which makes some sense. It's a joint, joint use. So that is kind of where we are. And Mr. Hamilton, you might wanna step in if I missed anything on some of our conversation there.
Ms. Reed, do you have other questions?
Well, I had was appraisal and who appraised it, but anyway, I didn't get my answers on that one. I guess you all got your own appraisers, but this gentleman here seems to be concerned, and, and you don't have a timeframe of UAH, so it's not public-private partnership on this. You're just selling this to them, and they're doing what they want to with it, when they want to with it. I mean, just tell it like it is.
No.
Don't go in there and say, well, tomorrow they can start tearing it down.
The commitment that we have from UAH is that they wanna use it for intramural softball fields, baseball fields, that they wanna tie it back in, and Mr. Garner, you can address this in a minute, too. They wanna drop, tie it back in with what, what their baseball stadium is right there, and wanna use it for student facilities, which fits very, very well. And that's the commitment that we have today from UAH and from this administration to change it. It would take a board of trustees vote, and it would take a board of trustees deciding to do something else with that property.
All I have to say is, I'm sad to see you all taking neighborhood parks, even downtown, taking that one away from the parks. You're taking it away from the people and the public. Please, start thinking about the people sometime. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address the council on this issue? Sir, if you'll go to them. Microphone, state your name and address for the record, please.
Sir, my name is Steven Setzer. I live at forty-two oh nine Arlington Road, which is just east of the park in question. The park in question, although it is property of the city of Huntsville, I asked the question the other night of Mr. Hamilton, it's always been my understanding in the years that I've been involved, and my family has been involved with that park, that the property on which it sits was donated to the city of Huntsville for the purpose of children to play ball, not to be sold to UAH, not for UAH students to play ball. My father ran that park for years. My daughter, my sister ran it after he did. The decline of which everyone wants to focus on occurred after my sister left the park, when Southern League from Brom Springs was shut down and brought to Continental League. It's two different cultures. We all know that different areas of the city have different standards of play, different standards of upbringing, and when these people came into the park, that's when we began to see the decline. The board of Continental League that was asked about this agreed with it, of course, because they're gonna return to their home park. They're going back to Brom Springs where they came from, which I'd like to know why in the first place Southern League was ever closed down. I know for years Brom Springs had issues with prostitution, and drugs, and vagrancy, and there was a reason why that park was shut down and folded into the Continental League, and now we're just gonna switch it back. And I understand business is business, and you gentlemen are charged with doing what you think is best for the city of Huntsville. I understand that. I completely understand that. But I just wanna get my voice on record as saying I do not appreciate the manner in which this was handled. UAH had thirty days notice on it. I had a two days notice on it, and that was after Mr. Kling shut down a vote. This is not my definition of transparency in government, and it hurts me to my core that you good gentlemen and ladies sitting on this panel, for some reason, think this is okay. It sounds like it's a done deal. My appearance here tonight is just to have my voice heard. The people that live in that community have been under the gun for years for fear that UAH is trying to eat that neighborhood up. The other night, when it was brought out that the ten acres to the south of that park have been property of UAH since two thousand and seven, they're slowly swallowing up Austin Drive, and everyone will try to point out to you, Austin Drive residents are selling their property, 'cause that's what they choose to do. Well, they probably have very little choice, being under the gun that UAH wants to buy that property up. I ask that you take all this into consideration when you cast your vote tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Does anyone else from the public wish to address the council? Ms. Kling?
Mr. President, first of all, I, I'm not comfortable with, with the speed that this issue moved up. It came up last, two weeks ago, and I wanna thank the mayor and the council when I raised the concern to agree to postpone this over tonight. We did have a very, a very strong meeting Thursday of last week. Mr. Hamilton was there with some of the other city recreation department folks to make a presentation, trying to sell me, I guess, trying to sell Councilman Culver, but very upfront, answering questions and taking in concerns that were, that were heard from the, from members of the public. I was taking notes on things that were said from the public, and it was, I think it was a good, a good session. A lot of things came out, and I've kind of waved a flag about. It's been addressed, or been mentioned, I just wanna make sure. Bottom line is, the residents would have access to the park, and somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, but if, if the zoning, if UAH wanted to change the zoning of that park for something else, doesn't that have to come back to the city for approval, through the city planning department, planning commission? Is that, or am I understanding that the right way?
Mr. Alfran, could you advise the council, answer Mr. Kling's question, please?
Yes, only the city council has control over zoning issues, so it would have to come back to the planning commission and ultimately the city council.
So let's say, ten years from now, fifty years from now, the UAH wants to do something else with it, it would have to come back to the city, and I guess the meeting, the minutes of this meeting would be part of the, a part of the record that the planning commission would take up. So it's not like the, UAH could just arbitrarily change the zoning, is that...
Well, Mr. Kling, they couldn't change the zoning, but if they're using it for a use that's consistent with the university, as a, as a state entity, they are not subject to the requirements of the zoning ordinance. But if they were using it for some other purpose, then they would have to come back.
Okay, like that. The, another thing, and these are things that were mentioned from different people that were at the meetings, and I think it's worth just getting as much as we can, you know, for the neighborhood. The playground equipment, as I understand it, is gonna remain there and available, as, as has been said previously, the park is open to the residents, walk your dog there, stuff like that. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And I think a concern that was raised also at that was about if people from the neighborhood, because they couldn't drive through Sondra Lane, that there were gonna be a barricade or those little finger things up, which I think is actually a good thing, because that would cut off, at least cut through traffic, you know, from the neighborhood, Jordan Lane to UAH. So I think that's a good thing, but as I understand it, those who wanted to drive, like people who live in Arlington, if they wanted to go over and drive through the UAH campus and access the park through that western parking lot, they're allowed to do so, no traffic tickets, anything like that, is that...
Correct.
That's protected in there.
And additionally, Mr. Kling, one of the discussions we each, since you brought up the barricades, so their intent is to put up bollards, so, you know...
Bollards are those concrete fingers?
Basically, the fingers, as you say, probably three or four feet tall, wide enough that you can walk or ride a bicycle through, but not wide enough for vehicular traffic to go through, 'cause you're right, we would not want people to start using Sondra Lane as a way to access the campus. But what the, what the university is also committed to, and this was a major discussion point on Thursday night, is they're gonna set those up such that the eastern end of that parking lot, several parking spaces remain accessible from the Sondra Lane street access. So you'll be able to, to drive in off Sondra Lane and park there adjacent to where the playground equipment is, which is likely to be the predominant use for, for people immediately there, but, but not the only use. Obviously, they'd be able to go to the rest of the park, but they'll be able to get off of Sondra Lane Park in the parking lot as they do today on that eastern end of, of the parking lot. The larger part of the parking lot would then be accessible from the campus side, so for those that are doing larger events and need the larger amount of parking, the campus is publicly accessible, and they'd be able to come in off the road in what, what UAH has described, kind of the direct route into that park will come in from behind their current, the athletic facilities there right on homes.
So I guess the purpose of that is so that way you don't have a bunch of on-street parking along Sondra Lane, which we've seen in other neighborhoods.
Correct.
A gentleman kind of talked about it, and two things that I think are very important as, as far as the heritage of the, of the neighborhood. Two pa, there are two fields, one is named after Stan Setzer, in fact, I was proud to be the sponsor of that resolution, and also there's another field named Riggsfield, in honor, you know, of Mr. Riggs. Are those gonna keep those names?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, a couple of questions that were asked out here. Mr. President, perhaps we could, you know, get a little bit more information. The appraisal, somebody said one point two million, somebody said nine hundred thousand. What, what was the process that went through, was gone through as far as the appraisal?
Both, both the university and the city had appraisals done independent of each other. They came in very, very close to each other, and it was in, in that range between the two, just right below one point two. As the gentleman discussed, given that the park will remain publicly accessible and usable by basically every, every citizen in the city that wants to drive and use that park will, will continue to have access to it, and given the nature of a public-to-public agreement, the amount of investment that UAH intends to put into the park, we felt as though the nine hundred thousand was appropriate price between the two entities, given, given that we'll continue to be able to use, access that park. There was a discussion about investment in the park. UAH intends to, to do significant improvements to that park, so in terms of the investment, we, we recommend that the, the best use of the dollars is to take the nine hundred K the city has then and put it into the parks that will continue to support children and families on, on city parks, and allow UAH to then make the investment into, into this park. Though I do not have a dollar figure, they've described to me the infrastructure improvements and the changes they intend to make. Obviously, they still need to design those things, and so probably little ways away from having a specific dollar figure, they'll invest in it, but just given the scope of those improvements, I would, I would argue that they'll invest far more in that park than what we would be able to.
It's not part of UAH and the city, but I know we've had other neighborhoods, more recently, the construction of the Walmart in the Bintown neighborhood area, the police department, and natural resources have done a real good job of monitoring noise, and I think one of the things that we had heard at the meeting the other night was concern from residents about noise out there. So I would like to ask that if this thing does pass, the council, that, you know, Danny Shay and, and the police department kind of be on alert so that they can, you know, monitor the noise. The natural resources department, I think, has been very proactive in these neighborhood issues, so this is more of just a request that if this does pass, that we could get the natural resources department to actively watch...
Yes, Mr. Kling, we agree wholeheartedly, and I've been communicating with both Chief of Police and Danny Shay. We committed to the neighborhood to send back to, to their association president for dissemination throughout the neighborhoods, the instructions on exactly who to call, who has jurisdiction, and those types of things relative to noise, and I'll have that answer probably within the next day and be able to send that, send that back to the association. But, you know, they are, they are subject to the same noise ordinances, and we just need to ensure we step up enforcement. In the interim, the chief of police has already sent a message to the precinct commander there to ensure that his officers understand the enforcement obligations.
Okay. I, I know Mayfair Park, there were some problems, but I think there was some good enforcement that stepped in, and I think Mr. Russell and I saw a, a big decline in the complaints that we were getting after, after that was done, so, have that. A gentleman had raised a question about, are there, when the city got this property, the city does have the authority, you guys can sell it to UAH, 'cause there was, is there any restrictions?
Yes, Ms. Sissy Cates from the legal office did the review, and I had her after Thursday night. We went back and, and had her reconfirm all of the paperwork, and the, the original donation did not include any restrictions to the action that's proposed tonight.
Well, thank you. Again, I wanna thank the mayor and the council members for, for carrying this thing over when it first came up, and gave us a chance to have the meeting. when it first came up, and gave us a chance to have the meeting, and at least to get some of those concerns brought out and see how they could be addressed.
And, Ms. Kling, let me say this, you know, that is a very important neighborhood to us. I mean, that, that neighborhood is, is adjacent to UAH, but it's also a component that is an asset for UAH, because it does provide housing in, in there that can relate to the community. One of my best friends, Trey Riley, grew up there, and I remember catering his sister's wedding at their house, and right in that same area, Pat and Georgia Meager lived over there, Pat Meager still lives there today, and it, it is a very important area. We were gonna make sure that we work with the Neighborhood Association to make sure that it's just as seamless as possible. We have a very good relationship with Dr. Altenkirk, with the UAH administration up and down the road, just as we have a good relationship with Alabama A&amp;M University relationship and the Oakwood University relationship, and if any of those organizations felt that, that they were doing something that was not good for the neighborhood, and doing something that infringed upon the rights of the neighborhoods, they have been very, very quick to respond and quickly responding to us. So, if you do have complaints, please give them to our office, because we will take them to, to the administration. They have been very responsive to us, and we have, you know, been through, you know, the past six years, regularly, conversation with all three presidents of the universities, and working with the administration of the universities, and I think that we have a commitment to making sure that y'all are, are, can live peacefully and, 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 and the way that you want to, and that that neighborhood comes along and is a very alive neighborhood. We were riding through the other day and looking at the different models of housing in there, I mean, it's really kind of unique, it's something unique in the city. And, you know, our, our goal is to make sure that this enhances neighborhoods and make our, makes our neighborhoods better. And I'd love for Mr. Garner to stand up and, and kind of address, have we misspoke anything on what we've talked about, what we've been having conversations with, with UAH and with the administration on that?
Mr. Garner, if you could please introduce yourself and tell us your title?
Ray Garner, I'm Chief of Staff to President Altenkirk at University of Alabama in Huntsville. No, I think...
Sir, we're, we're having trouble hearing you, if you'll raise the microphone and speak directly into it, thank you.
How's that?
Better.
Better? Okay. I think it was covered very well, the points that we've agreed to, that were addressed very well by Mr. Kling, and so, we remain committed. What I would wanna share with you is, we, this is shared space between our neighbor, our, our campus and the neighborhood. We have as much interest in making sure that that park remains vibrant as the neighborhood does, and so, that's, that's one thing I wanna stress. I, I won't recap all, all the points that were made. The other thing I wanna share is, we wanna make sure that that park remains safe, so by routing, you know, on campus, they, they're gonna have to drive by our police department. Our police department's 200 yards from this park, and so, for that reason, we wanna make sure that the park is a success, we're willing to invest money in doing that, and the, the other point I guess we'll make is, we're gonna be willing to listen to input from the, from the community, from the neighborhood, on future plans for the park, you know, the changes that we wanna see. One of the ideas is, we're gonna, we would like to try to reduce the asphalt in that park, we wanna try to enlarge the park component, we're gonna, obviously, we're gonna keep the ball fields, and Mr. Setzer, I appreciate your family and the Riggs family's service in that community. I mean, I grew up in west, southwest Huntsville, so, I mean, I always knew it as Riggs Field, and so, I appreciate your family's service to the community, but, and so, for that reason, we're going to keep those names. So, we, we listened at the, at the public hearing as well, and made notes, and pretty much, we have the response, you received our letter today, I'll be happy to share the, the point, bullet points with you guys here tonight, so. With that said, if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer it, I appreciate the council's consideration of this resolution.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Culver?
Thank you, Mr. President. I do want to say that a small part of that area, University Park, falls within District Five, which is the district that I represent, and I too, Mr. Kling, am concerned, as evidenced by my presence there at the town hall meeting the other night, but I will say that every concern that I heard has been addressed, Councilman Kling, as you so eloquently addressed, reiterated, this evening. The only thing that hasn't been addressed, Mr. Seltzer, is what you have commented on this evening, and is obviously, you know, not that practical for, you know, legal reasons, but I am convinced that this will be a win-win situation for our community and for UAH. Looking at the letter that Dr. Altenkirk sent, every concern that I heard, I mean, I, I, I wish we had been able to address this on that particular night, but I just want the residents in that area to know that their concerns haven't fallen on deaf, deaf ears. We have listened, we have heard, and UAH has acted, and to that end, I think it's gonna be a, a good thing. So, having said that, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilmembers, do we need further discussion? We ready to vote? All who's in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? He carries. Two is a resolution number 14-854, authorizing mayor to execute a real estate sales contract between the city of Huntsville and the Board of Trustees of the University of Alabama for the sale of approximately 10.07 acres of property of UAH. Chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Culver, discussion?
Mr. President, I guess, let me just kind of reiterate what I'd said earlier. I'm not comfortable with the speed that this whole thing went through, but I think I saw a lot of good assistance from all of y'all, which I appreciate carrying it over. The folks in the neighborhood came out to the meeting, I think, as Mr. Hamilton said, there were probably about 70 people, I know that the city departments took leaflets, and a lot of email was put out to the association and everything, and I just wanna say, I think there was a lot of catching up, but there's a lot of, a lot of responsiveness that came in. I contacted a lot, a lot of folks in the city with the response that I'd gotten from the neighborhood and the things that y'all have done to put into the, to the agreement to, you know, protect the neighborhood access and give protection, playground equipment, the names of the, of the parks and the other things, I appreciate, and I just think that it wasn't done exactly the way I would've liked it done, but I think there was a lot of good, a lot of good followback from the city folks, and I appreciate y'all working on this.
And, and one final time, Mr. Garner, y'all will be good neighbors, right? Thank you.
Further discussion? All who's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries? Councilmembers, if there's any other business needs to come before us tonight? We adjourned.